And trustee Cronin, apologies to him, sorry. We had a meeting and I'd rather not say, but it's involving SAFER and some contract negotiations. It's, we couldn't pass it up, but we tried to get out of there at 4:30, we just couldn't. So I'll update you later. I can't see it from the... So we're all sitting here for us? You ready? Clerk, ready? Okay.
Yeah.
Like to call the special board of trustees meeting to order? If we'd all stand for pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, unbeaten, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Okay, roll call by clerk.
Maloney.
Here.
Ermely.
Here.
Cronin.
Here.
Feeny.
Here by phone.
He's on phone, yep.
Hardinger.
Here.
Wyland.
Here.
Zagami.
Here.
This is just a board meeting, trustees, right, not a joint?
Yes.
Okay, I was just making sure. Public comments, anything under public comments? Social, are they using social? Nothing on there? Okay. Anything else on public comments? For the third time, anything on public comments, hearing none? Moving forward to number four, resolutions. Resolution number 2023-001. Initial resolution authorizing $1,385,000 in general obligation bonds for street improvement projects. Motion to approve by Ermely.
Second.
Second by Zagami. Anything else on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Was that a aye or a no, Nate?
That was the affirmative, aye.
Thank you. Number five, resolution number 2023-002. Initial resolution authorizing $285,000 in general obligation bonds for water systems projects.
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Zagami, second by Cronin. On the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carry. Number six, resolution number 2023-003. Initial resolution authorizing $530,000 in general obligation bonds for sewage, sewerage projects. What's your pleasure?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Zagami.
Second.
Second by Hardinger. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carry. Number seven, resolution number 2023-004. Initial resolution authorizing $10,675,000 in general obligation refunding bonds. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermely.
Second.
Second by Cronin. On the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carry. Number eight, resolution number 2023-005. Resolution providing for the sale of not to exceed $12,875,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2023A. What's your pleasure?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Zagami.
Second.
Second by Ermely. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carry. New business.
Can I?
Yep.
Can I talk about what you just all approved?
Sure.
Okay, so...
Shouldn't sort of I said, sort of I yielded to you?
That's okay. I just want to make sure that you approved the refunding of an $8.1 million loan that's at Inner City Bank and also it gets down to $2.2 million loan. The $2.2 was the initial building borrowing that we did for the land purchase and for the safer building, not safer, but for our safety building. So we're refunding bonds. And then the other ones that were approved is that we're borrowing for Burke Street. So Burke Street was done this year, but we didn't borrow previously. So the streets portion of Burke Street is 1.3, water is 2.85, sewer 5.30. And here's storm mark, storm mark is in there too. I guess no storm mark. So those are, that's what you approved. And with the state regulations, you have to borrow so, you have to approve so many resolutions, but it's just going to be one borrowing for the $12.85.
That's what everybody was doing, right? We're all approving it?
What's the interest rate?
So right now, we don't have a finalized interest rate. We did get a post pre-sale from Greg Johnson. I think it was between 3.5 and 4.25, 4.5. So it went up a little bit from when we initially started talking about borrowing for this building. And the regulators, the Fed is meeting again before we borrow, before we're going to be borrowing. So we'll have to see what happens there. Municipal bonds aren't, don't correlate exactly with like the Fed rate. It's not when the Fed goes up 5.5, we're going to go up 5.5. It's a little bit more. And as I was talking to Greg before, he said a lot of the bond buyers already have that in their head that they know the Fed's going up. So even if we were to borrow, say today, they're already thinking, okay, they're meeting in January, there may be increasing rates. So it's not, we're not losing much by not borrowing like today.
Okay. Good, thank you for the explanation. Any other questions?
Greg is online too, if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
You're welcome, Jessica gave a good summary.
Okay, moving on, new business, number nine. Kennedy Park Surveillance Project. Does Greg have to stand?
Not unless he really wants to.
Yeah, I know you enjoyed his meetings, Greg, so you're more than welcome to stand.
I appreciate that offer, thank you.
All right, thank you, thanks Greg.
Number nine, Kennedy Park Surveillance Project. That could be you.
Yeah, this is just a follow-up from the last meeting. If you recall, Chief and I discussed that day, so I was trying to piece together numbers at the meeting and I missed the, some of the labor costs because they, they pieced together each piece, Kennedy Park, Skate Park, and put some labor costs in there. But then there was an overall labor cost related to the system build in general that I had missed that night. So most of those approved was less than what the, what the actual cost is. So I just wanted to bring it back and get that.
Good, any questions?
So the, the equipment is 35,000 and you're asking for another 12,000 to cover labor?
Yes, well, the equipment was 27. And they, that, when we approved it that night, they had, they had included labor costs for like placing the equipment.
Oh.
But then there was an overall system build.
Yeah.
Costs that I missed.
Okay.
Okay.
I move to recommend the village board approve the agreement to work with camera corner connecting point with cost not to exceed 47,000 and funded using ARPA dollars.
Motion by, made by Ermely. Second by Wyland. Any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. I didn't hear Feeny's response, did you? Okay.
I voted aye.
Okay. It, you have to, you have to actually use your words because the head motion, we can't see. I'm just teasing.
Got it.
I know. Number 10, rescind resolution number 2022-0XX. XX?
Yes, there was no number on the resolution.
Okay. We got to start over. Rescind resolution number 2022-0XX. No number on the resolution. Discontinuance of a portion of Dominica? I'm not saying that right, Dominica Street in the village of Weston, Marathon County, Wisconsin, with a discussion of possible approval on preferred option for further action.
So I guess I can introduce this tonight. And I did a conversation with President Maloney last week. I think we had some misunderstanding or needed clarification in terms of what kind of action was taken on this resolution last time. Did consult also with Attorney Edie on this. And we didn't really get a chance to talk until late in the week. So included with the staff report on this was his email to me that was received in the afternoon on Friday. And outlining potentially some options here. In the end, I guess the recommendation from Attorney Edie is that we did not make a, we did not take action on a properly authored resolution. It needed an exhibit specifically for what the request would be. We had talked about some options. I think potentially the resident who had applied or had appealed to the board to consider this discontinuance of Mary, of, I'm sorry, Dominica Street in the public interest, perhaps had a different perspective of what he wanted versus what the village was willing to entertain. So with that uncertainty, we needed to bring this back. And I don't know if I could just turn it over to Matt perhaps to say, to explain what really we should be considering going forward here tonight.
Sure, happy to. So there's two ways that you can discontinue a road. One is by the neighbors getting together and signing petitions, and that's one process. The other process is initiated by the board. So this one seemed to be kind of a little bit mixed up in that it was really more of a neighborhood issue that the board tried to get involved with. And so there was no resolution drafted that was specific enough to determine, I guess, the next step. The resolution would need to be, it would need to define the area that we're intending to discontinue. And when I looked at the, at the resolution and the photographs that were attached, it was certainly unclear whether exactly where this was to take place. Was it the entire roadway? Was it just the 16 feet, one of the maps? And so, I mean, it's not a critical error that you can't fix tonight. You just have lots of options. You can amend the, the earlier motion to be specific about what it is that you're going to discontinue so that you can move forward with your public hearing, give notice, have people object, and then have a public hearing and then vote. The problem is, is if there is an objector, then you've got to carry a two-thirds majority on what's in the public interest. And so you could also move forward on the 16-foot, you know, discontinuance, if you wanted to, and amend the prior motion to be specific and include that particular part of the road. Or you can rescind it and do whatever you decide is appropriate. If you wanted to have the plant commission take a look at it, that's fine. If you wanted to have the neighbors, see if they can put together an agreement that they would all be behind and maybe go through the petition process. You could do that too. So lots of options, but there wasn't enough clarity in what exactly the board was doing at the last meeting to know how to go forward.
I think, I think the biggest sense was we had a trustee that wanted to have the planning commission look at it again.
Sure, I think that, that part of the motion would be, that would be proper. We're doing that tonight.
Yep, okay.
I guess just to back up a little bit too, initially, Mr. Musnaski did attempt the petition process. We, we did advise him that that was the, you know, way that this could be done without going to a public hearing through the board. He was unsuccessful in getting the proper signatures on that. I think the main signature that was needed in that case was the property owner of the south, that would be Keith Tappy for the former Barnett property. And as we prepared for the meeting tonight, we also coincidentally had a meeting with Mr. Tappy. We had talked to him a little bit about this on the phone as well. He's never been at any of the meetings that had been conducted with this item discussed. He's only made his opinion or his perspective known by email or by phone. Following our meeting with him on Thursday about a couple of things he's talking about for development, one of them being the future development of the property itself, another for a property that he has on Ross Avenue. He did send an email back, which was copied and packaged, attached to this report, indicating his, still his objection to doing anything with a discontinuance. And still he has a wetland delineation done, a current wetland delineation done on that property of the south, which he says won't happen until September.
So? September now?
September.
I thought we were talking spring, May or?
He did say in his meeting that he would not have it delineated until later in the summer. I believe he said that in his email as well. So that being the case, you know, I guess the board could certainly see what the plant commission has to say tonight. And, you know, whether they want to consider proceeding by initiating a resolution or initiating the discontinuance throughout an action of the board, adopting a resolution as we tried to do last time. And I guess I will say that it wasn't necessarily intent to adopt the resolution last time, maybe only to get the language. So you could have potentially the plant commission recommendation for next Monday's meeting of the board, in which case, if you wish to take this up again, you could decide that at that point in time. Otherwise, just based on the information we have now, as of late last week, recommendation that I've indicated in here is that we should rescind this unnumbered resolution for discontinuance and just defer further action until we get the PCD recommendation and then that wetland delineation of the south is completed later this year.
So the wetland, the wetland determination is the entire 40 acres? Or are we more concerned about the two entrances on each side of the outsides?
Well, what the wetland delineation would do on the entire property would, it would affect how you lays out streets and the whole development.
But if we, if we gave the land back to the two landlords, then you would effectively have to work that water that way to those two entrances without using this one, right? I mean, I'm just trying to think of the different options because we originally thought about letting it all, letting it go back to the landlords, doing that half 16 and moving the street over, or doing nothing at all. Those were the three hard options. But now the water is in the middle of it now, which is going to stall all of that. Now up to September, what guarantees do we have that September is going to be finished?
I'm not sure we have any guarantees.
I, I mean, I was here on the, on 2018 when it started. Yes, I, I will agree that we didn't have the two other entrances or exits. And now we do, which took, took some time, but, okay.
That's the pain point for me. I mean, we keep kicking this can down the road and at what point is enough enough? And we need to make a hard decision and roll it.
So, but your intentions, Bart, because in 2018, you were for not, not doing that, not giving it back. And I don't know where you are, and I'm not asking that. But you just wanted planning to take another look at it.
I want planning because I think more people that can look at this, I mean, it's a sticky.
Yeah.
And I, my concern is if we give it back, we lose our right of way. Could we end up with having sewer and water having one of these dead ends? You know, that you may need to go through there to make the loops, or I don't know. Is this, I, I've got so many questions regarding this that, and I don't have, I haven't heard any answers to it, you know?
Is the current neighborhood, you know, so north of the possible new development, are there any stubs right now, Michael? Are there any, anything that doesn't flow? Is it all connected, you know?
It's all connected to the north, yeah.
Okay, so it's all, nobody stops at the end or nothing like that, okay? All right.
And then are we going to end up with another cul-de-sac at some place? And I mean, I, Don Tappy, you know?
We wouldn't allow a cul-de-sac in there, right? I don't believe we do anymore. It'd have to be a heck of a reason to allow a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I think our streets ordinance has essentially removed cul-de-sacs.
We still managed to put them in there for so long.
Yeah.
But that was my concern. Because I, by turning this over to the property owners, which is, would be, solve a lot of problems. I'm not arguing that. But my concern is if we do this, are we going to create an issue with this, you know, sewer and water coming into the new subdivision? Is there going to be, you know, where we have to have a, I don't know, same. And, but they're getting their sewer and water from the other street, right?
Who's that?
Oh, to bring in that water and sewer off of Schoeffel Avenue, right?
Yes, so I mean, there's certainly a stub at Old Costa, a stub at Dominica, and a stub at that end of Mary Lane, Connie Lane.
Okay.
So, I mean, a lot of it depends on how, how they would lay out that development.
You understand what I'm?
I understand what you're saying, correct, yeah.
I don't want a dead end that at some point we have to do like we're crossing the river just to get a, the flow, you know?
And, and the, the way into the neighborhood currently is Old Costa Lane.
Correct.
There's not another road west. I mean, I went around there, I lost a few times, not really, but, you know, it's, it's pretty navigable. But no, I'm, one of the residents brought up, through a fair, that it will be Old Costa, which is going to take you in.
Yeah.
And you could go through the neighborhood to get in over by Joel. By where?
Stella.
Stella, okay. Okay.
There is a possibility of a future connection, extension of municipal street throughout outlet that's in the development, I think is small, that's actually owned by?
It's on the west side.
So you mean, would you go to the west of Overhead Door, American Overhead Door?
It's way west, yeah.
You would sneak through the woods there somehow?
Pretty much where the driveway is for each kid's property.
So you'd, you'd straight through, okay? I didn't know that. And that gets you to the Joel side?
To the, I guess it's Connie Lane over there.
Yeah, Connie, but I mean, Joel.
It's Joel Bush, that's the name.
Yeah, that, that corner, I meant that corner up in the top, okay?
Yeah, it goes straight up.
So that actually could be two floors right there.
We do have a utility easement essentially at Municipal Street extended on that west side right now.
Or Old Costa, so the whole time we've been talking about Dominica.
Well, I'm saying, going further north, right, I feel that, yeah, no.
Okay. So what do we, we need to clean up what we didn't do correctly last time?
I make a motion rescind, is that what we need to do?
So by doing this, we're just going to leave it off again, there will be nothing there, right?
We would, we would not, well, we would not go forward with the resolution as it was put together on last Monday or whenever, I'm sorry, back in December. Get some, and I guess you'd be awaiting some clarification as to what your next step may be after this. So I guess in terms of the, or the proposed action tonight, I guess if, if we would have the motion rescinded and await for, await plant commission recommendation before you consider further action, would that be fair?
But are we going to actually tie it to a recommendation? We're not going to tie it to the delineation, right? I mean, we're not going to tie it to September.
Well, that's up to you.
No, no, I would rather not.
No.
But if, but if we want to, if we would want to tie it to the PC, but then we could vote on that early enough as of next Monday.
Right.
I guess if that's what, if that's what you'd want to do, then I guess we would want to know perhaps what, which, which proposal you would be, want to be considered.
Are you staying for the next meeting, Joe? And your turn, pardon? Are you staying for the next meeting for PC? Or not?
I know, I didn't know, but it's necessary.
And so if they're not, then you won't, right? Or, I, I mean, do I even say this all out? I don't know.
Are you asking for a public comment? Is that what your question was for PC? Is that what you meant?
Yeah, because we're going to have, this discussion is going to come up again. Now, I did see some emails of we could talk differently, and everybody has seen that, so.
So I think part of the question is, you know, what, when is the right time?
Right.
So, you know, you could go ahead and you could amend it to say that we are going to discontinue the entire road. And then if, if any of the neighbors object, you're going to have a public hearing.
Right.
Then you're going to have to listen to the public hearing. And then for, and for, for the, you know, for the discontinuance to happen, then two-thirds of the, of the board members have to vote for it and have to conclude that based on the public interest, you know, it's in the best interest of the village to discontinue that entire road. So the problem is, is if you have anybody objecting, it's going to be hard to conclude probably that it's in the public's best interest to discontinue a road if you've got neighbors that are complaining.
An email from one person.
So I think that, you know, that, that maybe, you know, letting the neighbors try to work it out first,
if that can happen, is, is, you know, maybe the best option. Because if you go with the 16 feet, again, maybe the neighbor across the way isn't going to support that.
Well, I mean, what, what Keith said is, Joe, you were unable to get Heath to sign that way. But now exactly the opposite way, if we go to do this, only Heath could sign and it stops it. So we're both sitting here in the middle. I want to make sure everybody understands that. So there was a light bulb going for me right about halfway.
You're not making the decision today.
Right.
On what's going to happen. You're saying that we believe today, as we sit here, that it's in the public's best interest to discontinue either 16 feet or the entire roadway. You're, you're approving a resolution to that effect, which now triggers giving everybody notice about what your plans are and having neighbors the opportunity to object to it.
Right.
And if they object, then you have a public hearing. They come in and they tell you why they don't want to have it happen. And then you guys have to vote. And it's, it requires a two-thirds vote at that point in time to, to go ahead and discontinue. So, you know, you're, so which way is it going to go? I mean, you're putting your finger up in the air, you know, in the wind right now and, you know, it's, but you have the right to go amend it to 16 feet, amend it to the entire road, or rescind it, maybe let the plant commission talk to the neighbors and try to see if there's some other way to figure this out. You know, maybe see if Attorney Rundy can talk to whoever is representing Keith Tappy and work out some kind of deal. And then come back to you with, you know, with an option where you're not going to have somebody objecting.
Right.
Which is going to put you guys back in the hot seat again, having to figure out what's in the public interest after, you know, hearing testimony from different neighbors that have different opinions.
So and to be clear on a three-quarter vote is a five to two? Or is it a four to three? It's five to two.
Two, two-thirds of whoever's there.
Ah, okay, okay.
So I think as a clarification on the signatures, it's, it's an objection from the budding property owner is the key, right? So there are three signatures needed in this case. Joel, the person across the street, and Tappy. The other, the other signatures are from the property owners that are within the half mile, I think it is, of the, of the proposed discontinuance. And you need one-third of the signatures from there. It's kind of a complicated explanation the way we were looking at it. But if that's the way the statute's written.
Okay.
But if Heath objects, as long as we have a five to two, it can be, we can vacate it, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
The kitchen would be, is it in the public's best interest if you got the public of, through, one of the two, three that are affected objecting? How do you? I'm sorry, give me an answer. I guess I got a problem with that. You know, I mean, I don't have, I, I would really like to see if we could get Mr. Heath to.
So I guess to that point, you all had a copy or have a copy of Keith Tappy's email from Friday. He all, he went on to say on that, in that email regarding a partial right-of-way vacation, this seems like a reasonable temporary alternative. I'm not sure this isn't the public's best interest because there's a lot of time and energy being spent for creating a partial right-of-way vacation. Everyone hopes that this gets developed and that when this developed, this gets developed, that the smaller right-of-way can be completely vacated. I don't know if that's the hope, but, you know, it may well be. Um, if this helps the village, Joel makes sense for future development options, then I can support it. Drawings are great and makes sense now. Uh, Joel especially, there are still questions remaining for us to support this option, but it seems logical and a good compromise. Again, but prior to that, he indicated that he would not support either of the options, so perhaps that would be beneficial to have a meeting with him, I don't know.
What's he talking about reasonable temporary? What's that mean?
Well, I think the per- the perception or the understanding is that Joel would only support or want a full, or I should say a complete vacation slash discontinuance of the right of way. I don't know that to be true or not true, but that's my, my takeaway from the information that's been presented to the board at this point or up to this point.
Okay, Steve.
This is not temporary.
So I can address that point if you would like. So Joe has a, a couple interests, his talk being the full discontinuance. He has other things he would consider as a resolution to this that he'd be okay with. For instance, he would likely be comfortable with a resolution that resulted in utilities going through, but no traffic. Uh, and then the right of way as it currently stands being uh replaced to its current condition after utilities are put through. Um, so, you know, we are willing to have these discussions and come to a different conclusion on this. Uh, we're not adamant that the only way forward is full discontinuance. That is obviously what Joe would prefer. Um, but yeah, Mr. Donner's point, I think, you know, a conversation about this where we actually sit down at the table and talk about options between village staff and the other parties would be pretty beneficial.
But if we run the utility and there's a permanent easement, is not temporary, that's a permanent easement. Because they may need access to that at any time to get to that property and repair or whatever they have to do in there. So there's no temporary here, there's a permanent easement.
It'd be a permanent easement, but then they would put it back to however it was, right? When you're done?
It, it's just a part of a, that area, but it is belong to
Yep, it's still, yeah, it would still be the right of way, right, but yes.
Okay.
So I think what you'd be looking at is, okay, you know, do we need the road for police protection, for fire protection? Uh, you know, would we build a road there or would you think that's a waste of our time and taxpayer money to do that? Those are the kind of things you want to be considering when you're looking at whether it's in the public's best interest.
So I, I've spent a lot of time on this since actually before the last meeting, before the last meeting, before the last meeting. And we're talking about how many homes in there, Michael? A possible home? Forty, fifty?
No, seventy.
Seventy, okay, seventy homes. So seventy homes, um, we, we've got an issue with the water delineation. I, I'm not going to try to get that right. Um, so we could, you know, have two or possibly three entrances with seventy possible homes, correct?
Seventy six.
So in um, in the, in the neighborhood across the river, about roundabout, how many homes are back in there?
Don't know, it's how many?
Hundreds. So seven hundred, I think it is, right? A little over seven hundred? And we have one road in. Now, we do have another option. We can drive all the way down to Clux, which I've done several times. You know, and um, to come home, I can't make it an hour lunch. But um, I, I can, I can actually take my house and then go back and I can make it back to work. But I mean, that's our other option for seven hundred homes. So, I mean, I, I just, we got to kind of keep this in perspective here. You know, seventy homes versus seven hundred homes, seven hundred homes has one way in.
There's three ways in.
Oh, yeah, there's three ways in, but how, the, okay.
How far away you and
Do you want to go? But the other two ways are Clux. Unless you go all the way around the Wassa and in and come in on SS. Am I not right?
Yeah, I, I, this is like
I mean, I know you said three ways, but three practical ways?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, come on, I mean, you know, you, you got, if you're going to say three ways, then you got to explain that it's easily another half an hour to get out to Clux, come all the way back in or run down Grand Avenue and run all the way up to N and then up to uh Old Colonial and then come into Back Way Two. I don't know another way. Um, or the bridge, so, and it's been closed twice since I have lived in that neighborhood. Completely, that's why I'm so adamant when there's work to be done there, that only one lane gets crossed. And I'm just, I'm only thinking about myself for a ten minute ride with an ambulance and not forty-five minutes, so. Um, okay, I, I just wanted to bring that up. And I'm sure there's other areas in our community or other communities around here that are in the same boat.
So when you make your record, you vote on this as you're looking forward to your next hearing, you have all the evidence presented, when you make your decision, if you start, you know, making your decision based on things that are not in the public's best interest, whoever loses, you know, is going to have a, a potential claim, uh, you, you know, that you didn't consider the appropriate standard in making whatever decision you made. So I'm just trying to make sure, regardless of what you do,
Right.
that you look at the standard, which is in the public's best interest. So if you vote in favor of it, say why it's in the public's best interest, okay? And make sure you, you know, you, you go down that road, okay?
So what we're looking for tonight is to rescind this resolution that we somehow did at the last meeting. Just to put it back to it, just to, to the starting point again, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's our, that's
As part of that though, do we still need to have some sort of, something that kicks, something that kicks it to planning? Because it is still on the agenda for planning.
But it is kicked to planning. We don't need nothing.
What's that?
It was already kicked.
Yeah, it's already kicked there. Barb picked it up planning already, so I don't think we need a resolution to set it up.
Okay.
We don't need, we don't need to tee this up, correct?
Right, the resolution just starts the process for the public hearing and the injections.
Yep, yep, okay.
But if you want to do a discontinuance, we have to start that, don't we?
We do.
Yeah, and I think we're going to listen to planning. So next Monday, we'll have heard what planning is going to say in a half an hour. And then we can see if the majority wants to go in a certain direction. At that point, it'll just be a four, three. But then for the voter, it'll be a
Right, four, three is fine for the resolution, right, it's only if somebody objects.
Okay, so what's your pleasure, I?
I'm sorry, I have one more question. Michael?
Yep.
Um, if it was seventy, seventy-five homes that they ended up putting south of that Dominica Street, are they, the utilities that's existing and stubbed out to the east and the west, would they be able to carry?
Yeah, I mean, flow wise, it's fine. The, the whole thing, it just comes down to how, how they end up laying out their grid.
But
Yeah.
you, you don't need three lines running south there. You could do it with two, is my question.
Yeah, the, the sanitary line is really the main one. I mean, the two water lines on the outside are probably fine. It's really the sanitary because we use gravity feed, so depending on how, you know, and with the wetlands, it's going to dictate where they want to put their streets and how things are going to meander, so.
He doesn't want to cut off potentially having to use Dominica instead of one of the other.
Right, and also you have a lift station or something that has to get put in because you can't get gravity feed to go to the other ends of the, I guess, subdivision, so.
Just point I want to make. When did, when did Mr. Tappy purchase this property?
Um, six, seven, eight months ago.
So he purchased that property knowing?
Knowing what?
That this problem existed.
Hmm, I don't, I don't know if he did. I don't know. I, I know, um, the people before that
If you look at the map, it looks like the road exists.
Yeah, actually, when you see the map, it, yeah. I don't think he's viewing this as a problem.
Okay.
I, I don't, would you think
I saw his email in here.
He does not look at this as a problem.
Yeah, he's not. He's just wanting to make sure that he has two accesses when he goes to Cluck because the wetland delineation is going to determine how he lays things out.
But when you take this and, and, and string it back, it's forty acres approximately, right?
Yeah.
And you go to the highway, is there anything developed to the east or to the west in that same zone? So behind Joel's house to the highway. And if you go to the east or to the west of um, now Heath's town.
Lands wrapped around it.
Okay, so there's not, there's no way out that way. There's no other possibilities.
It's not, it'll be developable, but there is a small part of the rest of the property to the west that would probably be perhaps some development potential.
Okay.
Please talk the ball along.
Okay. Okay, so on our plate right now is just to rescind this, uh, to go to kind of back to a starting point. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to rescind the unnumbered resolution twenty twenty-two zero X X for discontinuing Dominica. And defer further action or consideration of discontinuance until after P C recommendation and wetland delineation to the south.
Um, I, I don't, I don't, I don't want to vote on a tying into the delineation.
I would prefer not to.
I'd say P C only.
We have a motion on the floor.
I, I know, but she's not quite done.
Or you can be done, you can be done.
I'm just looking at this again as I was reading. Well, we're rescinding it just for discontinuance for further action. Okay, just, okay, I guess maybe I will um remove the wetland delineation to the south.
Okay. Or, or you can, instead of the and, it could be and or, right? No, no, just, I, I will vote for it if that, if that is removed. I, I should, this is probably improper. So Barb, I believe you now, you finished it at P C recommendation, period?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Corin, any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Could you, could you read the motion again, please?
Yep.
Well, I so she was reading off what was recommended on the RFC, except for she wanted the part about the wetland delineation left off.
Right.
So I, I didn't write it down verbatim, but I know what she's, what she read.
Right, it's the full whatever's there and then instead of
Why don't you reread it?
Can we, one just thing, uh, put a deadline on the P C recommendation because you're saying you're not going to do anything until that happens. Um, the P C may never ever make a recommendation.
At their next meeting.
Right, so give them a deadline by which they do that so you can continue your action.
Good point.
Okay, did I have a second? Was there a second?
Yes, there is, Corin.
Okay, would you rescind your second?
Well, that or we can just make an amendment to your motion.
Well, she, he just wanted it repeated.
That's just, we, just read everything. Once you get the P C recommendation, stop.
Okay, rescind, motion to rescind unnumbered resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero X X for discontinuance of Dominica
We're in the meeting.
And defer further action
Yep.
or consideration of discontinuance.
You're here at six, right, right. Sorry about that. That was Gary Gart Collins asking if six o'clock was the meeting.
Okay, I just stopped at discontinuance. I didn't put in after P C recommendation or the land, wetlands.
Okay. Steve?
Second.
On the discussion, any more discussion? Hardinger? She has some heartburn?
I, I, well, I think it's a good idea if we do suggest that that recommendation is made by the end of this next meeting.
If you want to put it in there, that's fine. I mean, I think we're going to have, we're going to have a recommendation at the meeting tonight. It's on the agenda.
Okay.
I'll find with it.
So we're fine with it?
Same.
We're good, good, okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So Carrie, um, Pam, do you have it okay?
I do.
All right.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We made it? Let's see if I can do this again. All right, so what's that? Attorney referrals? Any attorney referrals? Okay, uh, staff referrals, any staff referrals, Michael?
Oh, I thought that was stuff to get referred back to staff, but uh the only comment I do have is the traffic signals flashing at Barbicon and Camp Phillips. Um, I've been trying to get that fixed for, the week I'll work for a day and then it goes back into all flash mode. So uh, the traffic signal consultant or company will be here Wednesday, hopefully to figure it out.
Should we, I mean, shouldn't it be automatic that all the stop signs get pulled? Because I, I was just, uh, actually Steve and I were driving through there, uh, you know, and we saw it, I saw it first Saturday or Sunday. And then isn't that just an automatic that then they flip them open so that it's a hard stop? You know, they're flashing red every, all, all directions. But I think that's a requirement that, um, law enforcement or, you know, the sheriff's department. And I, I believe Steve saw a sheriff's department drive right through there. And I, normally they stop and open up all the stop signs on all ways. I think maybe a phone call should, could maybe get made either to R P D or to their, so.
Until it's fixed.
Just a thought, until it's fixed. It's just, it's one more level of, hey, you have to stop, okay? Um, okay, because I usually take those as suggestions, so. Um, let's see, remarks from trustees? Uh, Hardinger? Nope. Well? Barb? Corin? Nate, anything you, any remarks?
Nope, none.
Okay, none from me. Future items, next meeting date, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, which is next Monday. Board of Trustees, we're going to be meeting at six P M. Looking for motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
By Hardinger?
Second.
Second by Corin. All those agree, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, thank you, everybody.